If not, sit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the new republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Roll, please, Danielle.
Yes. Shippers? Host?
Here.
Rice?
Here.
Bunts?
Here.
Bosher?
Here.
Bauman?
Here.
Fent? Van Pelt?
Here.
Putvin?
Here. Thank you.
Uh, tonight, so I need an approval of this evening's agenda again June 23rd, 2025. So moved?
Support.
Putvin?
Yes.
Bosher?
Yes.
Bauman?
Yes.
Van Pelt?
Yes.
Fent? Rice?
Yes.
Shippers? Host?
Yes.
Bunts?
Yes.
Next, wasn't too hard to read, the approval of the May 27th, 2025 meeting minutes. I need an approval of those, please.
I move to approve, uh, meeting of May 27th.
I'll second that.
Bauman?
Yes.
Fent? Bunts?
Yes.
Shippers? Van Pelt?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Bosher?
Yes.
Putvin?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Okay, this evening, got two public hearings. First one, we have an application filed by property owner Nicholas, and I'm gonna call Nicholas L., 'cause I don't wanna kill him. Uh, requesting that property at 820 South Mitchell Street be rezoned from B3 to B2. Having read that, Mr. Adams?
Well, thank you. Okay, I have a PowerPoint for you, so we'll, we'll go through it. Okay, the applicant is Nicholas, and Nicholas, how do you pronounce again for?
Uh, wait, sorry.
Okay. Anyways, the, uh, Nicholas wishes to establish a short-term rental at 820 South Mitchell, and it's currently zoned, the property, B3 Central Business District. The B3 district does not provide for short-term rentals. Uh, therefore, he's requesting that it be rezoned to B2, uh, what's referred to as the Central Business District, and B2 does provide for short-term rentals. Just as a, kind of a preliminary note, as we go through this, frankly, staff is not opposed to short-term rentals in the B3 district. But the way staff looked at this, we're dealing with a rezoning, and so we have to look at much more than just the anticipated use. We have to look at zoning as a whole, and whether or not, uh, the, the B2 is appropriate for this area. I just kinda, I wanna make that known, okay? And, uh, so we'll go through here. Just for the benefit of the, the folks that are here tonight, in terms of the general rezoning process, very quickly, the planning commission, uh, reviews the application and makes a recommendation, a report, uh, to the Cadillac City Council. Uh, once the city council receives your review, your report, they can approve, deny, or possibly even redirect it back to you. And as part of the process, and they have the final decision in this, as part of the rezoning process, both parties, uh, conduct an advertised public hearing. And, uh, we have done that. Just some basic information. Um, the property is located, uh, west of Mitchell Street, just south of the Dollar General. If you look at that draw, or the aerial photo, or the photo, I'm sorry. The, uh, the parking lot area to the north is Dollar, Dollar General. The site itself is 55 feet of frontage on Mitchell Street with a depth of 165 feet. Uh, it's accessed on the north by, uh, a gravel driveway. I have another draw, or another photo in a second, but it's a two-story structure. And for many years now, the structure has been somewhat divided. The upper story used for residential purposes, and the lower story, or the ground floor area, for commercial. Just a couple of shots, again, on the left is the, uh, an aerial, uh, of the property, and on the right, um, I'm standing in the Dollar General parking lot, looking south. So you can, uh, you can see the Dollar General sign, you can see the, see the building, so it kind of acquaints you, uh, where, uh, where it's located. Again, just a little more information, as I mentioned, it's a residential structure, primarily, uh, two-story. Uh, the upper story has a residential rental unit, uh, that was registered in 2023, and that registration renews July 24th of 2026. And as I mentioned, I believe at least, the ground floor, and if I'm incorrect, uh, Nicholas can, can correct me later, uh, the ground floor, I believe, is vacant. Historically, I, I know, at least back a ways, it was used for a body art stu-, tattoo parlor. A bo-, I like to call it a body art studio, okay? And, uh, the site, uh, the parking landscaping, they're not real well-defined, but they exist. It's a mix of gravel and somewhat sporadic site vegetation. Just a few pictures, photos. Here we are, standing, looking west. I'm standing across Mitchell Street, that's the, uh, the front of the building. Again, on the right, where you see, uh, a part of a yellow sign, that's Dollar General. Here I am, I'm looking north. Uh, that would be the south side of the building, the structure. And again, if you look to, on the left, you see a truck, that big truck is in the Dollar General, uh, store. There's a car just to the left, that's on the parking area of this particular, uh, site. I don't think you can see it well, but if, on the far right, if, across Mitchell, is the Admiral Service Station. Here we are, looking, uh, at the rear of the building, I'm looking east. Uh, flights of stairs going up, one flight going up to the apartment upstairs, and then the, the lower flight serving the, uh, the ground level. And then, we're looking south, uh, again, you can see again the Dollar General parking lot and the, uh, the north side of the, of the building. In terms of, uh, of a rezoning, uh, essentially, what we do is make a determination based on a series of, of standards or findings. And essentially, what we're looking at is whether or not the B2 zone district, uh, is appropriate for this location. Perhaps it's comparable, uh, to the B3, or in some cases, uh, one may find that it's even better suited for this particular site or area. And to make a determination, we look at a variety of factors, and we're gonna go through those in just a second. We look at consistency with the city's master plan. We look at land use compatibility, again, I'll be explaining these more in a second. We look at whether or not public facilities and services are adequate to handle, in this case, the B2 zoning district uses. We looked at the, uh, zone district, uh, application, the uses themselves. We looked at various district standards, design standards. And then lastly, there may be some other factors. And, and staff, uh, there are two other factors that we're gonna be looking at in just a second, that we believe pertains to this particular request. And I know this is a tough one to read, too much verbiage. But, uh, it deals with, uh, the first one, first item we're looking at and a finding, this is the, uh, is the, the B2 compatible with the master plan? And I wanna read this one. And that is, "The site is located in the southern leg of the Mitchell Street corridor." This is how the master plan describes it. "This leg extends from South Street, which is around Family Fair, to about Mackinac Trail. And the plan finds this leg, or the leg, developing as a general business district. It identifies it as zoned specifically as B3, and states, the plan states, that no changes are recommended in that B3 classification." And that's found on page 32 of the, of the master plan. So therefore, staff made a finding, and again, I'll, I'll read this as well. Uh, "The rezoning to B2, based on the master plan, is inconsistent with the plan in that, the plan states that no changes are recommended in the B3 district classification." So staff finds also that there's really nothing to indicate that changes or other factors have occurred since adoption of the plan that would warrant a rezoning to, uh, to the, uh, to B2. I- in essence, the B3 designation, as the master plan points out, fits this area. Land use compatibility, uh, in terms of range of uses. Here we look at if, if it were to rezone, uh, to the B2, would there end up being conflicts with surrounding land uses? And, and basically, I'll summarize this one. Essentially, the B3 encompasses all of the B2 uses, with the exception of short-term rentals. So essentially, conflicts are pretty much mitigated, based on, uh, good planning and design. So this was not an issue. Public facilities and services, the standard is, or are, uh, the factor we looked at, are existing public facilities and services capable of accommodating the land uses permitted by the B2 classification. And staff found that, uh, in talking with the other staff, public facilities and services are more than adequate to handle, uh, the uses provided in the, the B2 classification. So again, there's no, no conflict here. This one, a little tough. Uh, "Is the B2 classification equal to or more appropriate than the B3?" And we had two findings here. Uh, in essence, staff found that the B3 is the more appropriate. And again, I'll, I'll read these because of the verbiage on there. First of all, "The B3 provides for the broadest range of business uses. The district is encompassing, including the retail business and service establishments permitted by right and those subject to special conditions in the OS1, OS2, TS, B1, and B2." In essence, it covers everything. And, uh, the B2 classification would somewhat limit the range of possibilities in this area. But again, basically, the B3 covers it all, uh, with the exception of short-term rentals. And there's really no reason to bring, to incorporate a B2 designation in this, uh, in this area. And then secondly, as I've already mentioned, the, uh, the B2 is inconsistent with the, the city master plan. The plan, as pointed out in here, states that no changes are recommended in the B3 classification. And again, that's page 32 of the Cadillac master plan. In terms of, uh, of, uh, "Does the request meet the criteria required by the zoning ordinance for the intended use?" Essentially, if it were rezoned to B2, um, can those B2 uses meet the design standards required of it? Lot areas, setbacks, and so forth, and it can, that's not an issue. The two other issues, uh, however, um, that I wanna talk about, the first deals with what we refer to as spot zoning. And spot zoning is not always a bad thing, by the way, okay? But staff felt that the rezoning, uh, to a B2 in this location would, uh, would be an inappropriate spot zone. And just for the, again, the benefit of, of the, the, uh, the commission and others, let me, let me read this. "Spot zoning is the process of singling out a parcel for a use classification different and inconsistent with the surrounding area for the benefit of a particular owner. While the unique zoning of a small area may be appropriate based on public need and benefit, unplanned spot zoning, uh, though it's not always easily defined or recognized, it tends not to be an appropriate use." And let me look at the criteria here, that, what am, what am I talking about? Typically, when we look at spot zoning, "Spot zoning is a, a situation in which the area is small compared to the surrounding districts." That is, we're rezoning an area that's small in relationship to surrounding districts. The new district, in this case, the B2, allows uses that are inconsistent with those allowed, uh, in the, the vicinity, the area, the B3 in this case. The spot zoning confers a special benefit to the individual property owner, and the spot zone conflicts with the policies and the text of the master plan. With respect to spot zoning, our findings were, and again, I'm gonna read this, "It is the staff's opinion, the rezoning meets at least three of the criteria for classification as an inappropriate spot zone. The area, the site, is small compared to the surrounding area, which is zoned B3. The rezoning, in this case, provides the owner with the opportunity to use the property for a use not permitted in the surrounding B3 classification, that is, the short-term rental. And similar to that, the rezoning would confer to the applicant a special benefit, the use of land, that is not enjoyed by the surrounding property owners." Again, the short-term rental. Very important, I think, in the world of planning and, uh, in the world of development, obviously, is economic return, you know? We don't like to put into play, uh, a, a situation in which individuals can't make an economic return. And so we looked at the site's B3. Uh, "Does this, does the B3 provide the property owner with, uh, adequate opportunities for making a reasonable economic return?" And again, I'll read this. "The site's B3 district provides for the broadest range of business uses. The district is encompassing, including the retail business and service establishments per, uh, permitted by right and subject to special approval in all of those districts that I mentioned earlier. The district also includes all of the B2 uses, except for short-term rentals. And the variety of, it's staff's opinion, the variety of opportunities, the wide variety of opportunities that are available to the, to the applicant for the purpose of making a, a return on investment." I wanna summarize all this. "It is staff's finding that the B3 classification is the appropriate designation for 820 South Mitchell Street, and does not recommend rezoning to the B2 classification." In summary, the reasons being, first of all, uh, relative to the master plan, the B2 is inconsistent with the currently adopted master plan. The plan specifically denotes B3 as the proper designation. In terms of the range of development, uh, the parcel is within area developed as a general commercial corridor. B3 provides, uh, for the broadest range of business uses permitted in a major, in, uh, including the majority of business establishments we find in the OS1, OS2, TS, B1, and T, B2 districts. So a wide range of, of uses. And, uh, obviously, if we're familiar with the area, you know that the area is developing accordingly. Thirdly, uh, the spot zoning issue that I, I mentioned, as I indicated, the B2 rezoning meets at least three of the four criteria for classification as an inappropriate spot zone. To summarize, the area, the site is small compared to the surrounding area that's all zoned B3. The rezoning provides the owner with the opportunity to use the site for a use not permitted under the present B3 classification, and the rezoning would confer to the applicant a special benefit, a use of land not enjoyed by, uh, surrounding property owners. And then lastly, uh, staff feels that there is, um, sufficient opportunity for, uh, return on investment, uh, with the B3. And as, as I indicate here, with the exception of short-term rentals, the B3 offers an extensive range of business opportunities for purposes of making a return on investment, and evidence of development opportunities exists throughout the neighborhood area. One has only to go up and down the corridor, and you see the existence of that. And in summary here, um, we did, uh, notify all property owners within the designated, uh, 300-foot area. We also put notice, a notice in the newspaper. And as of today, we did not receive, uh, any, any correspondence. And in terms of, again, the planning commission's action, uh, following the public hearing, and the applicant is here tonight, so I'm sure, uh, that he'll want to speak. But following the public hearing, your deliberation and consideration of finding, uh, the PC shall recommend approval or denial of the application, and you'll be reporting the same to, uh, the Cadillac City Council. And as you all know, but for the benefit of the audience, should additional information or timing, uh, be needed prior to making a decision or a recommendation on your part, obviously, you can act to postpone action on the matter to a specific date, time, and public location. Hopefully, that won't be necessary. But, uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Other than that, Mr. Chair, again, the applicant is here, and I'm sure he'd like to be able to speak to this.
Before I open public hearing, any questions for Mr. Adams first, board?
Sorry, there's so much text.
You covered it well, sir.
Yeah.
Uh, before I open public hearing, would Nicholas like to say anything?
Uh, yeah.
Come forwards, please.
All right. So I had a much more in-depth, um, summation of what I wanted to say here, but, um, unfortunately, I deleted it instead of printing it. So, um, what I have here is just a, a brief summation. Um, this is, uh, what I, um, sent in with my application. And, um, I'll just read that really quick, just, um, so everybody can get, uh, an idea. I'm submitting a request for rezoning for my property at 820 South Mitchell, which is currently zoned B3. It's my wish to get it rezoned from B3 to B2, uh, or any other relevant, uh, zoning for short-term rental on my upstairs apartment. Uh, it was my understanding that my original zoning of B3 would be allowed, um, as it was written in the zoning ordinance, that any retail, business, or service establishment permitted in OS1, 2, TS, B1, and B2 districts as principal uses permitted, and uses permitted subject to special conditions. Uh, however, I was told that providing a short-term rental business is not deemed as a service, and was advised to hold off on any appeal because zoning would soon be changed in my favor. It has been over three years since my first request, without any change to the zoning. Uh, I asked, "What could be done to speed the process along?" And I was told that the rezoning request was the best course of action. Um, I bought this property with my life savings and have put over $40,000 into this property in restoring it in hopes of building a well, wellness business, uh, for the main level, um, while living out of the upstairs apartment and renting it out part-time to help mitigate some of the business risk and pay off, um, the mountain of debt I have accrued. Um, my property is, in my opinion, in a perfect location for short-term rental. No residential neighbors within a city block, with the closest buildings being Dairy Queen across the street and Dollar General, uh, to the north, and, uh, Realtor's Office to the south. It's in the social district, and it's a short walk to Lake Cadillac, the White Pine Trail, downtown Cadillac. To my knowledge, uh, there aren't any short-term rental options in the social district, um, since Herman's European Cafe and Hotel was bought, um, by the owners of MMS Cal, which is currently, uh, housing for their employees. Uh, rezoning for short-term rental would not only be a great impact for the city and tourism, in my opinion, as, uh, most people traveling look, uh, for Airbnb and VRBO for their charm amenities, cost-effectiveness, and location over hotels. Um, it would also be extremely beneficial in helping, uh, complete my updates, and climbing out of debt and opening my, uh, wellness business I've been working so hard to create, um, and help give the citizens, um, a happy and, uh, better quality of life. And just to add some things, um, I don't necessarily disagree that it's, um, kind of, uh, unfitting for me to be rezoned to B2. It seems, um, like it would be kind of, uh, a patch that just doesn't really fit. Um, but that was my, that's what I was advised to do. To, to me, it made a lot more sense, um, for a special uses permit to stay in B3. But, um, I was told my best course of action in potentially being able to do short-term rental would be to request rezoning. Um, which doesn't seem, um, doesn't seem like the best course of action, in my opinion. And with, with, um, every other business district being able to do short-term rental and not B3, I don't really quite understand that. Um, as I have, there's two hotels in my district that are just blocks away from me, um, and that by definition is short-term rental. Um, and I know people would rather, you know, stay in town and utilize the social district, which really has, uh, kind of fallen flat over the years and, um, not really been utilized as much as I believe it could be. And, yeah, I'm really just trying to, um, just trying to, you know, give something back and build a business here, and like, try to get out of debt here. And I've kind of been hung on the hook for years here, like, saying that, "I'm going to be able to do this," and then, all of a sudden, um, the zoning commissioner retires, and, yeah, I can't really be held accountable for, um, for what he said. And, um, I know I'm, I'm probably missing a lot of what I wrote in, uh, um, and with, with the big picture here, but, um, I'll just leave it at that for now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Adams.
Then, just for clarification, the, the short-term rentals are specifically identified as such in the B2 district. They are not identified as such in the B3. And generally speaking, if the use is specifically identified in a district, if you want to allow it in another district, you need to specifically identify it as such. And it's not the case. And when the city, uh, not too long ago, as I understand it, um, when they, they rezoned, uh, a number of districts allowing for short-term rentals, they specifically added the language "short-term rental" to specify that this is where they will be located. And if they're not specified specifically, then they won't be located in these other districts, so.
Thank you for that. May I ask a question?
Yes.
Question for staff, so related to that, is there, do you know, Jerry, or staff, what argument either council or the commission made to not permit a special use permit in B3 for short-term rentals?
I have, I, I wasn't here, unfortunately, so I, I don't, I don't know. It's my understanding, um, that if the new zoning ordinance ever comes about, that short-term rentals are being considered in the B3. Uh, not residential, in the B3. Uh, but that's, you know, it's not going to satisfy or help this gentleman right now. But I, I, I don't know why, I don't know why they weren't considered in the, in the, and maybe Danielle does, but I don't.
Um, I can't recall, but I just remember the codification of Wallace's, um, memo, and I don't believe that B3 was listed in that memo.
Because that's another option, technically, to include special use permit.
Right.
Short-term rental is special use permit in B3.
Also, I'm hearing that, uh, there is a potential rezoning modification that is in the works right now.
Yeah, but I, I, I don't wanna, you know, that's way down the road.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm.
Okay, that's, that's way down the road, and I sure don't wanna give anybody hopes that may not materialize. And it's possible, you know, based on public hearings and so forth, that it may not materialize, so, yeah. We, we need to go with what we have right now.
Yep.
Question for staff, maybe clarification on, um, you know, is it correct, are the two hotels that are on the south end of town, B3 also? And what, what's the different verbiage between a hotel?
They're specifically identified as motels and hotels, and defined as such in the ordinance. And, uh, I, I agree with what the gentleman said, you know? It's kind of has something, some similarity here. But because they've been specifically identified and defined and so forth, uh, that's the cut, kind of the catch-22, so to speak. I can't broadly say, "Well, you know, it, it fits, so I'm, therefore, I'm gonna allow it." Uh, it's not specifically identified as such. You go, again, you go to the B2, short-term rental. You go to the B3, you won't see that terminology.
Could one apply for a one-room hotel in the B3?
Okay. You're really getting out of the box.
You're really getting out of the box.
Well, I've got, I mean, let's.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
What we're dealing with is old verbiage here.
Yes, right. Which hopefully will be cleared up someday. But could one, I suppose, I've never thought about that, a one-room. It'd be an interesting, a one-room motel, you know.
Could staff point us to the definition of short-term rental in the code?
Say that again now?
Could you point us to the definition of short-term rental in the code?
Yep, it's defined as a furnished residential unit, including an apartment, house, room, or any living space in a house or apartment that owners rent out for periods of fewer than thirty continuous days in any one month. I can also read the definition of a hotel as well.
I was just curious.
And which is why, oh, and which I, why I don't know if you could liken the two. I think that definition of a hotel is distinguished enough from definition of short-term rental in the sense that I don't think you could apply for a one-room hotel and call it, and operate it as a short-term rental under the zoning ordinance.
Is that definition in section one dash two?
Um, yes, in the codified version of the zoning ordinance, it's forty-six dash four. I can read it off to you.
Oh, no, I, I'm just, I just want to find it because it's not, I can't find it in the codification. Forty-six dash four?
Forty-six dash four is the, is the general definition section of the zoning ordinance. Hotel is defined as a building or part of a building with a common entrance or entrances in which the dwelling units or rooming units are used primarily for transient occupancy, excuse me, and in, in which one or more of the following services are offered. Maid service, furnished, furnishing of linen, telephone, secretarial, or desk service, and bellboy service. The term hotel may include a restaurant or cocktail lounge, public banquet halls, ballrooms, or meeting rooms. And I don't believe that definition was otherwise modified or changed at all when the short-term rental definitions were, or short-term rental ordinance provisions were included in the ordinance.
There it is. For further clarification, on the short-term rental definition, it said in a residential house, correct?
Yes, a living space in a house or apartment that an owner rents out.
So in B three, residential is not allowed on main level? Or is residential allowed on main level?
Main level, as long as it's not in the DDA.
In B three.
It is.
Someone, you can apply for a.
B two and has to be upstairs.
Yep.
He's upstairs, yeah. I think it can be upstairs, but that's, yeah.
Residential dw, in B three, residential dwelling units except units on the primary floor at grade level if the unit or units are located within the downtown development district. That's in B three.
Which this is, because it goes to the.
And the upstairs of this unit is, you know, is licensed for a, a long-term residential unit, so.
This is an interesting distinction.
Board ready?
Ready to go with the hearing.
Public hearing?
Open it up.
Okay. At this time, we'll open public hearing pertaining to the eight twenty South Mitchell residential home, considering rezoning from B three to B two. Anyone that has any input, good or bad, please come forward, state your name, even though we know yours, but that's okay.
You surprised to see me? Okay, so I have been through a ton of these meetings, obviously, with Cadillac and, and other cities. And I thought maybe I could have a little bit of help on the difference between hotels and short-term rentals. And primarily, the main thing that people look at is that there's onsite staff or there's someone onsite twenty-four seven at a hotel, where that's not the case with a short-term rental. I think what's interesting about what he's doing is that he's got a wellness space in the bottom of it. So in theory, he's going to be onsite twenty-four seven or will have staff that exists in town all the time, which is different than a typical short-term rental. So just be curious, from your perspective, if he could qualify as a hotel and not a short-term rental just with that difference, because he will be there onsite. That's all.
Thank you, Sarah. Could it, brief question for staff. Could it be a bed, could it be a bed and breakfast?
And I can read off that term, defined term as well.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Bed and breakfast is defined as a single-family dwelling unit in which the innkeeper resides and has up to eight rooms available for rent to transient tenants for fewer than thirty days. The reason why I think that is distinguished is it's because it's a separate dwelling unit in this instance, not part of, when you think of bed and breakfast, there's one kitchen serviced by the owner or operator of the bed and breakfast, whereas in the short-term rental context, it's a separate dwelling unit with a separate, usually a separate entrance, so.
Sorry, young lady, we've got a custom ahead of you, so.
It's fine. My name is Carla Moore, and I live in Cadillac. And so I drive right by that area every time I leave the house, basically. And it is very desolate down there. We need some business. We need stuff going on. I was told a while ago Dunkin' Donuts was supposed to come in, and they're not there yet either. So it seems like that side of town has been forgotten, so this would be a really big help. Also, a lot of employees there, wellness business, I'm sure he's not going to do everything himself. So that would be, you know, a few jobs coming in. And it's not in a residential area. That's my other point. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Good evening.
Good evening. Stephen Barnes, and I'm just going to speak as a business owner and a resident and somebody that observes a lot. And I think, just sitting back listening, the crazy thing is, you could tear down the building and build a hotel, but you can't rent a room. That, to me, just is mind-boggling. It, it seems like really the issue here isn't what he's trying to do. The issue is that the wording there isn't correct. It needs to be corrected. And so I guess from my position, I think that that's really what needs to happen. Because what if the same, you know, even if you tried to apply a short-term fix, it's not going to really solve the problem, or it's just going to kick the can down the road. And the real problem, I think, is pretty obvious that the wording in, as it pertains to the B three and this issue really hasn't been thought of or just forgotten about or hasn't surfaced yet. And this is just the first time that it's come to light. And so it seems to me this is a great time to fix the problem and be ready for the future. I can also say, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the DDA, because we have not discussed it, but I can tell you that the DDA, we, we get a lot of feedback and we're always looking at what things downtown needs. And this property is not in the DDA boundary, but it's very, very close. One of the recurring themes that we are hearing a lot is the lack of short, you know, short-term rental, hotel rooms, et cetera. We don't have a hotel in the downtown area. The closest one is at the top of the hill or, you know, the one going down the north end or all the way on the west side. So some of these, you know, and I know another one is on the, I was on the docket tonight. There's one that's been approved downtown. These are great. There's something that's needed for downtown as well. So potentially, there could be a couple opportunities like this on the periphery. And again, a great reason to fix the problem now. So I guess all I would say is, is as a resident, as a business owner, as whatever, just take a moment and do it right and fix the problem.
Thank you, Steve. Any other input, good or bad? Yes, young boy.
He's made a tire. My name is Billy Gorski, and otherwise known as Nick LeTart's mom. Okay, just so you all know that. And I'm not real savvy on the B through, B three, B two, all that jazz and all the wording and everything. I do agree with the gentleman and the people that have stepped up here tonight that wording is a big part of this. And I, I do want to say, this building sat vacant for, I don't know how long. I didn't even really pay attention to it until he bought it. And I know that he has worked very, very hard. I mean, everyone works hard, right? But, you know, and he had this vision in mind. And again, it seems like also it just keeps getting kicked down the road due to wording. And I, I, I don't understand also, but somebody could explain this to me, maybe you, Mr. Adams. You did go through this, but the hotels up the street, south, are zoned B three as well? Is that correct? And, and I, I get the, you know, the little bit of what she was talking about here, about the wording in there of how, well, the hotels are like this and this wouldn't fall under that category. And I, I don't quite understand that. So like Nick said, was he was told that his best way to deal with this would be to re, try to go for rezoning to B two. So he didn't necessarily want that. It's just that he wasn't getting it in B three like, you know, everyone else. So, and I guess just in closing, I, I would like to say, I would be up here probably saying the same thing, even if it weren't my son. And also, I would like someone to answer who this would be hurting if he were to be given this chance to do so. I mean, you know, it, it would help him, I mean, but who, who is it hurting, is my question? Okay?
Sure.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your.
Do I need to sign this?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Are we sure, staff, that Mr. Lighter couldn't provide linen service? Make it a hotel?
You know.
Or if he wants to be a bellboy, it appears.
I'd be happy to.
I, I think.
Again, I think, and there are a couple, and I, I, again, we're just legal. I'm just reading the ordinance as it's currently worded. Again, I think another distinguishing factor in the definition of a hotel is that it talks about a common entrance. Again, my understanding is that there would be a separate entrance to the, to the secondary dwelling unit. I mean, it's a separate dwelling unit. It's not part, when you think of a hotel or you think of a, a bed and breakfast where there's one common entryway access. I don't think necessarily the onsite staffing twenty-four seven is necessarily the sole or only distinguishing factor between a hotel and a short-term rental. I'm just reading the definition as it says, and it talks about a common entrance or, and, or entrances.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Adams?
I, I suggest you handle this, and then I have a suggestion afterwards.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, and certainly, again, the, I mean, the, the city is, can certainly revisit this and propose text amendments that would address some of these concerns going forward or determine changing which districts short-term rentals are permitted in. But, you know, I know that was a policy, policy decision back when these original amendments were adopted. And I know there's been discussion of revisiting that, so.
Also discussion of never revisiting it again.
Question for chairman, question for legal counsel.
Let me ramp up here a second.
Okay.
Everybody done speaking on this part right now? As far as public hearing goes? Just dealing with this right now. Everybody good? Okay, at this time, public hearing is closed. Now, Greg, now the board will kick this around. It's all right?
Thank you, Jim.
Go ahead.
You know, I don't think anybody's in disagreement here that this master rezon has drawn on way too long with no end in sight. It is a major, major task. Lots of, there's a lot of controversy. There's a lot of opposition. And then, but there's also a lot of support from a lot of people. And I, I feel this is a perfect thing and, and, you know, Nicholas, maybe this wasn't the path, but maybe this will start the conversation. And then that's where, can, can this be not voted on? Can this be tabled thirty days, sixty days? And have the staff come with a proposal for, you know, new verbiage for a B three? I'm guessing when this was wrote, nobody knew what a short-term rental was. And, you know, I, I think most of us are probably in agreement that this would clearly be a spot zone, very clearly be a spot zone because of verbiage.
Yeah. Agreed.
And, you know, he's been strung along for three years.
Yeah, I think.
With no end in sight.
In this case, though, he wouldn't need a rezoning if somehow we changed the special use within the B three.
There, there.
So I, I think perhaps Jerry's point might be do what we have to do and then have a conversation about doing what we could do.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Which way do you handle it?
Yeah.
I'm on board with that. We have that option to delay this if, if staff's guidance would tell us, could that get accomplished?
Well, but you wouldn't need to delay it because you wouldn't rezone it to B two.
No.
So you, you wouldn't need the rezoning. He instead would need a special use permit.
He'd just be all right.
Right.
Correct, okay.
Well, no, he might need a special use permit.
Yes, he would. He would need a special use permit that someone knows in this audience, but. Because that's why she's here.
And of course, holding up on what he wants does not expedite what he wants to do with the property.
Right.
You know, so.
Notice voting, no one changing it to B two.
Yeah, and I think doing that would open up a can of worms.
Yeah, that's, that's not a good option.
And there are probably a couple of other B three areas, if you open it up to this, that could be issues. I see an apartment complex down by the lake that could easily be changed to the consternation of all the neighbors. Just what, what other potential ramifications down the road?
Which that came up early, early in.
In the short-term rental.
In one of the first public meetings.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, there, there are several areas that.
Not very specific unit. Mr. Adams, jump in.
Again, I, I think you ought to be looking at this tonight from the standpoint, not of that particular use, but is the B three or B two the appropriate classification? And then you can move on, so to speak, you know, what would you like us to do? But again, I, I think you're getting hung up on a use, which I understand. But we're looking at the rezoning of, you know, we're looking at this from the standpoint of, of a district change. And does it meet the criteria for a district change? And again, I understand the hang-up, but my comment was going to be, then, you know, we can talk about, okay, how do we handle this particular use if you're of a mind that you believe it's something that we should entertain?
Obviously, we believe in that because we're trying to find a way to make it work, but.
But to Dale's point, any changes in the slam dunk either?
All right. Problem is, given the information we have, it's.
Mr. Chair, this stinks. I make a motion that the rezoning to B two from B three be denied based upon the record and the recommendation of staff, specifically the potential for spot zoning and its lack of inclusion as a special use in that zoning district. Is that sufficient, legal counsel?
Just to clarify for the record, it's a recommendation.
Recommendation, yes.
City council makes the final decision on this.
They can take the pain. They can take the pain.
And they still could approve, right?
Correct. City council.
Motion to not recommend, I guess, is the.
City council could could affirm the recommendation, it could reverse it, meaning a grant the rezoning. Or it could send it back to the planning commission for additional review.
So planning commission doesn't have the final say either way.
Got it.
Council could still.
So the rec- the motion is to recommend denial based on the discussions.
Yes, that is my motion. Thank you.
Anybody second that?
I'll support the motion.
Mr. Bunts?
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Bauman.
Yes.
Shippers, Bunce.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
Potvin.
Yes.
Fasher.
Yes.
Fent.
Any other input, Mr. Adams, before I move forward?
It's it appears as though there is interest on your part in possibly entertaining short-term rentals in the B three zone district. Uh either as a special land in some fashion. So can I take it or are you making a recommendation to staff that we investigate this and come back with a recommendation? And if need be, then we will go through the process of amending the zoning ordinance ourselves to to do whatever, you know, you tell us you'd like us to do.
I'd make that motion.
Okay. Okay, do I have a, do I need a second?
Yes.
Mr. Van Pelt?
One second here. Shippers, Host.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Bunce.
Yes.
Fasher.
Yes.
Bauman.
Yes.
Fent, Potvin.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Okay.
Could that report include um you know, addresses of what what's in the B three? Who's this going to affect?
Sure.
You know, across the board?
Yeah, we'll we'll do a we'll do a report for you. Yes. Not a problem. Good.
And I know you're gonna be meeting next month, so you'll see this soon.
Good, so.
Okay.
Nicholas, you're you're not done yet exactly. Our second public hearing, special land use application filed by Sarah Glidwell? Did I say you right? Gladwell, I'm sorry. I should've just said Sarah G, just like it did the poor Nick, Nick El. Anyway. To allow anyway for the property at one twenty-eight East Pine Street to be used as a short-term rental. Having read this, you got this in Danielle or Mr. Adams?
Leslie has this agenda item, your staff report for one twenty-eight.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know if you wanted immediate, I think we were giving a presentation, but I can certainly summarize.
So she's uh just consulting the um staff report that's in your packet.
Yep. So this um is an application for a special land use permit to uh construct or operate a special land or operate a short-term rental on property located at one twenty-eight East Pine Street in Cadillac. As you may recall, this property was um recently approved for rezoning to from O S two to B two um back in April. Uh that was approved by city council. Um the property had previously been utilized as a short-term rental. It was known as Orange Cadillac. Um the operation ceased after the city began some enforcement action. Uh which kind of precipitated a a lot of the discussion that we had tonight regarding the short-term rental amendments to the zoning ordinance. Um but the applicant currently does have, um you know, obviously has the infrastructure for the short-term rental. Um the property holds a registered rental certificate um for one unit, uh which would be considered for a long-term rental. Um the application includes a proposal, um some eight letters from the community as well as one additional letter that we was just received. Couple of days ago, I believe, that it should be included um as part of your packets or on your desks um in support for the special land use permit. The uh additional site information is included in your staff report. If there's any additional questions on that, I'm happy to address it. Um but to go through the special land use standards in the zoning ordinance, which are in section forty-six dash seven forty-seven. Um the planning commission must establish um and evaluate the proposal based on those standards. Um and we've provided an analysis of each of those um of each of those standards and the applicants, based on the applicant's assertions as well as uh based on the application itself. Um the first standard is that the app uh permit will or the proposed use will be harmonious in design and operation. Um the applicant has asserted that the uh short-term rental's historic character complements the downtown area. Um the applicant has also uh provided some support for mitigation measures, including a privacy fence. Um there's decibel monitors actually to address noise concerns and as well as some screening from adjacent properties. The second standard that the planning commission must evaluate is preservation of the essential character of the neighborhood. Um the applicant has indicated that the property is neighboring commercial uses, specifically the book nook. Um and that the short-term rental use will serve visitors who want to visit downtown Cadillac. Um again, there are some additional letters and supports that further speed to that particular standard uh for the planning commission's consideration. The third standard for the planning commission to establish is that there is non-interference with adjacent property enjoyment. Um again, the applicant has provided um certain mitigation factors um as part of the application, including um a specific guest rental agreement, which I believe is also part of the application. Um providing certain specific rules uh to address neighbor potential neighborhood concerns. Um the applicant also, and this is important to note too, provides direct contact information, um somebody that can be contacted. Uh ownership of the of the short-term rental at any time for any neighborhood concerns. The fourth standard uh for the planning commission to consider is that the improve that is improvement to the property in the area. Um I think uh existing photographs of the uh facility um speak to this particular uh standard. Um uh as well as the uh letters that had been presented um in in support of the application as well. With respect to the applicant's previous upkeep of the property and um how it is maintained. The fifth standard is uh that it's non-hazardous and non-detrimental. Um again, the applicant has provided um some evidence that the property has passed existing city inspections as it relates to um rental compliance as welding as well as building and property maintenance codes. Um as well as other mitigation factors to address any neighboring property concerns. The sixth standard is that there are adequate public facilities and services available to serve the property. Um we don't anticipate any um added strain to uh public services, given the um existing and prior use of the property. The seventh standard is that there are no excessive demand on public services. Again, um similar explanation as to the standard uh explanation, standard six. Um again, the proposed unit would be one, one single unit for the property. Um there would be a maximum of sixteen guests permitted um at any given time, um and that does not exceed any um infrastructure capacity that is identified under the building or residential code. Um standard eight is consistency with uh zoning and a comprehensive plan. Um again, the applicant claims that the uh short-term rental supports the B two district's commercial intent. Uh we've had some significant discussion tonight on the intent of the B two district, um which is supported by the use as a short-term rental. And then finally, um the ninth standard is this outdoor play areas, which is not uh applicable to this particular application. Based on our recommendations, um we've uh we've identified those in the recommendations on the last page of the staff report. Uh one particular uh factor I did want to note, if there are any questions about this amongst the planning commission. There are provisions in the zoning ordinance to require a um performance guarantee if under certain circumstances. If the planning commission would like to see that as a condition to the granting of the special use permit. Um and of course, the planning commission consider can consider any other reasonable conditions. It might uh deem desirable or necessary under the circumstances and based on the site plan. Any questions for myself or any other staff as it relates to this application?
You suggested a periodic annual evaluation possibly. Who's Bailey Wick would that fall under?
Probably zoning zoning administration.
So if you guys recall at the um last special land use that you approved for a short-term rental, that was something that you put in um as one of the conditions. So I think maybe we were just following how you had. Obviously, special land uses um can have varying conditions. It's not required that they all have the same condition. But I think that that was maybe where that was coming from is.
Is that considered part of enforcement?
So we had set it up um that the evaluation, the yearly evaluation report back to planning commission would be done by done by the um com dev staff, which does zoning enforcement. Um there is a separate code enforcement officer.
Okay.
Um but zoning enforcement would be done by community development staff.
We're still monitoring.
Now, when we did the one where the Park Place Cafe was, did we include that?
Yes, that was the one that I was referencing.
Okay, great, great. Just wanna be consistent in what we're doing.
Yeah, no problem.
Thought it was worthwhile, yeah. What is a breezeway safety? I have rentals and I don't know what a breezeway safety is, that.
Do you wanna maybe call the applicant up?
With the city inspections for rental compliance and breezeway safety.
That might be an uh an appropriate uh item for the applicant to address. Unless there are any other questions for me, we can invite her to.
I wasn't sure how much I could tap you on this. Okay.
Yeah, and again, some of the information that I read off um from the staff report, we took directly from the applicant's uh application uh as as support for the um the various standards to review. So she may be able to give more specific information on any of those mitigation impacts that we've referenced in the staff memo.
Any other questions for staff before I open public hearing? Everybody good? At this time, we'll open the public hearing again for the.
Did you wanna invite the applicant to speak first before we open the public hearing or that's kinda how we did it last time, but it's up to you.
We can.
That way, if the public has anything to respond to, they can respond.
Sometimes I get the cart before the horse.
You're just sick of hearing me talk.
I am. Just moving everybody out. Good evening.
Good evening. I did it right this time, I think.
Well, I'm thinking you have, yes. So let's start with your name for everybody that doesn't know you.
All right, so I am Sarah Gladwell, um one of the owners of one two eight East Pine. Um I'm obviously here requesting a special use permit so we can continue or reopen as a short-term rental. Um in regards to your question about breezeway specifically, um it's a company that pairs with the short-term rental insurance that we have. The company's called Proper Insurance. And what breezeway does is they come in and they have certified people that will essentially double check the work that you've done on your property from a safety perspective. So they come through and they will make you take pictures of all of your carbon monoxide detectors, smoke alarms. You know, all the things that could be in relationship to keeping your guests safe. And if you pass that certificate, then you get ten percent off your insurance. Um and so we have gone through that process um in addition to the long-term rental inspection. Um and we've got that as well. So it lowers our insurance a little bit, but it also guarantees that our guests are prioritized from a safety perspective. Um our my application was like thirty-two pages long or something like that for you guys. So I tried to provide absolutely everything that we could in regards to everything that we make guests sign, everything that we make guests acknowledge before they come to the property, the ways in which we cover ourselves, our guests, the community. Um and you guys have seen the property. I mean, when we purchased it, a priority was to not disturb communities, right? Like, we want to be in locations that make sense for short-term rentals. Um and so that property has a big privacy fence that's much larger than a regular residential privacy fence. We saw that as a way to kind of contain the chaos. Um we've also made sure that the common area is in the basement of the property, so it mitigates noise. We have the decibel monitors inside that um I get a notification if anybody is throwing an extensive party of any sort. So if the noise goes above a normal decibel for an extended period of time, like longer than fifteen minutes, then I get a text so that my neighbors aren't telling me that there's something happening in the property I know before they do. Um and so we've just really tried to make sure that you guys are aware of all the precautions that we're taking to to run a professional business here in Cadillac and um and so I'm just hoping that we can get this across the finish line this time, the correct way. Any other questions, you guys? What? Oh, yeah, we have external cameras as well. We have them on the front of the property um and facing the backyard as well that are. Um they get checked like after eleven PM, it's once an hour that they get checked. Uh we have VAs that work for us overseas that handle twenty-four seven communication with guests. So say something happens in the middle of the night and I'm asleep, there is someone that is going to be answering that phone no matter what. Um so that, you know, we can't obviously be awake twenty-four seven, but we do have uh people who are available to our guests in the property twenty-four seven as well.
They all speak English?
They all speak English. We make them send a video ahead of time so we can hear their English to make sure that it's understandable.
So is this actually five-bedroom or six? Cause you had stuff that indicated two downstairs, but then four upstairs. But yet in your verbiage, you had five.
So from.
You lost me.
Yeah, from an appraisal perspective, it's a five-bedroom because one of the bedrooms doesn't have a closet in it. Um but from a guest perspective, like Airbnb guests don't need to fill a closet with anything, right? We've got luggage racks available for them to open up their suitcases. So from a rental perspective, it's a six-bedroom. But if we were to list it available for sale, it's gotta be five.
I was just curious.
Yeah, good question.
Trudge through your stuff and and I read about the cameras, by the way.
And the yard mode. We got that handled.
Yeah, it was getting a little.
Oh, yes. Did you did you pick up the cover for the light that blew off?
Yes.
If you didn't, I was gonna do it.
Yeah, send me an invoice.
I couldn't figure out for the longest time what it was.
I couldn't.
I finally realized from the color, it had to be one of those lights up there.
It was a tiki torch.
Okay.
Yeah, that house has been an interesting one to learn as a new owner, so it's got its fair share of quirks, no doubt.
So you're the resident agent for Orange Cadillac LLC. What relationship does that entity have with the owner, uh Mr. McCall Stillman?
Uh both of us are from Michigan. We fell in love with the property when we started looking for investing in another property. Um and so we run the property together and the other three owners on the property that are part of the LLC as well are the investors. They financially backed the investment because I didn't have enough money.
So is there a a separate agreement between the LLC and the owner on the title?
Yeah.
Any other questions yet for Sarah before then I open the public hearing again? No, try to open it the first time, whatever. Any other questions for Sarah and translate it?
Don't hold back.
Well, since I've got you, you mentioned twenty-four hour accessibility and you had to know this was gonna come up. We were unable to properly serve the owner of the house over a period of months. How can this commission be assured that somebody's gonna answer a phone, let alone accept service and process?
Yeah, um you have my contact information. Um I think that that was a big hurdle that we were gonna have to come over when we first started this because the letters weren't getting back to me. Um and I've been by far the most active member on this project. I mean, we're up here constantly, as you guys have seen in these meetings as well. Um but John Wallace had my information as well. Um and so I think that was part of the frustrating process and it sounds like they have kind of gone through a similar scenario where we were never told that there were more meetings that had to be had. We were told that we were good to go after our first meeting and and so there was a lot of confusion. Um and I guess from my perspective, I thought that I would've gotten a phone call. You know, since I was the one that was primarily leading it. Um and my business partner Matt did move in the middle of that. And so I think one maybe got sent to the house specifically, which that mailbox doesn't get checked that often, as opposed to like my inbox or my phone number. Um and so I feel like that was kind of the the mud that we got stuck in. Um but I feel like ever since then, you guys know that I will answer my phone. Like, there will never be an occasion where I get a call from the city of Cadillac where I won't be calling back.
Piggyback on that question, you know, you know, this is kinda like the, like like Joe said, this is. You can view this two different ways and and if you were the, if your name was on the owner of that property. And I don't know um. staff can maybe uh fill in the the exact numbers here, but this went on for several months and served more than one time. Um I just have a hard time buying that it takes that many months to move. And if you're the owner on the property, you're going to get this notification somewhere. That this is not a top priority to address versus continue to just run. And and that's that's a he say, she say thing. It's just, I know it went on for several months and I just, I don't buy that. Um you don't move for six months. And that's a, that's a huge trust level that was established very, very early on.
Mm-huh.
That um I think, you know, we need to wrestle with when you're granting a permission or a use permit is, how does that set the ground and and that's just a something to wrestle with.
Yeah, I, go ahead. Um Sarah is more than welcome to address that comment um as well, but I did want to let the board know that the owner, Matthew, um is on virtually, um should you wish to have him answer that as well.
Happy to.
From the air.
Yeah, um should I go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um so, yeah, no, I I understand there's a lot of confusion. There was a lot of confusion from all ends. Um we had a direct connection with Wallace and we kept calling and texting him um with a lot of that. And, you know, to to not go and backtrack and dig up a lot right now, I do wanna keep it on mission as much as possible. Um but in the last meeting where we did get the zoning approved, uh Mr. Wallace did speak up on our behalf and did support this movement so we could get in front of you guys this round. And that's because there was many series of rectifying all of the issues that were present in the past. Um so as we moved forward, as we worked hard to get aligned with the city, as Sarah has also mentioned, we went forward with getting the rental certification as requested and suggested um by everybody on council. Um we continued to work and continue to improve our communication ever since that point, which is effectively, I think, why we were able to have the success of getting the zoning passed recently in the last meeting. Um you know, our goal is to run this efficiently. We were fully aware um that there were issues at a point, but all that has been rectified. We made whole uh the city on their attorney fees. Um and since then, we have continued to do whatever we can to keep the communication clean and efficient. Um so as we continue to move forward, um I'm thankful that Sarah and Ethan are there on on my behalf right now. Um we're expecting a baby in the next six weeks and we're getting contractions a little early, apologies for that. Uh but as we continue to move forward, um we just wanna run a very professionally run property up there as a short term rental. I do think this is a benefit, just as the gentleman that's been fighting for his property to get run uh just in the previous meeting um or portion of the meeting. Um I do think we can, we can establish what you're looking for, you know, success, um no issues, um great communication, and you know, if you have any other questions, please continue to ask.
Thank you, Matthew.
Anything else for Matt while he's on?
Okay. Ready for.
Hmm?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sarah. At this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Input here on one twenty eight Pine, Pine, yeah, I don't have notes in front of me, anyway.
Hello, everybody. My name's Trevor Knapp. Greg, we spoke a few times before. Um to go over kinda who I am, I mean, this seems like a clear cut case, but to go over who I am, I was born here. Went to the high school here, got my degree, came back and opened my business here. I'm a realtor with City to Shore Real Estate. Um I'm on the board of the Cadillac area of Young Professionals, trying to build that back up, so if you know any young professionals, please send them my way. So I'm not here to talk about the code enforcement or zoning. That is your specialty. That's the lawyer's specialty. I kinda wanna talk about my side, which I know Greg understands very well. Also, so I wanna talk about his highest and best use, right? You all know that as well, but an example would be that corner lot that sits on the on ramp of an expressway that sells for three hundred thousand dollars. Why did it sell for that much? Well, cause a gas station should go there, right? The highest and best use of that area would be a gas station. Now, I show homes up and down these streets every week, hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand dollars. And the median home value around here is that. And those are best used as residential homes. I don't think investors should come in and buy those and try and turn a profit on our locals. My whole family's from here. This home comes with a seven hundred thousand dollar price tag, okay? The highest and best use of that, I think, should be putting people in Cadillac that can spend money in our downtown district. Now, I worked with first time home buyers, I work with renters, I work with the median home buyers, all the way up to those few, you know, million dollar clients here and there, but those don't come along too often. And I see there's two types of buyers for this property, two types of people that we could eventually put in here as a city, right? One is someone out of town, Chicago, Detroit, they've got a lot of money, they come up here for three months and they go home. So now we've got a vacant property there for eight months out of the year. Is that highest and best use of a property like this? I don't think so. The second are the big bad investors, which the public, I've been to these before, are rightfully worried about. I have worked with them, okay? They're not the people we want in this town, I agree. Sarah and Ethan, I actually met them through the Young Professionals. They drive up here from where they live to come in and ingrain themselves in our local culture here at my brokerage downtown. I work for City to Shore. They came up here, they shook hands, they met young people, they met old people, they met diverse. I mean, they've talked to business owners, neighbors, other people. A big bad investor is not gonna do that, and I've worked with a couple of those people already. They come quick. I can tell you Sarah and Ethan again are not those people. So I think personally, we have our highest and best use of this property right here. Good people who are showing up. Did they drop the ball sure for this reason or that reason, or they didn't know or whatever? I get that, but they're here. They've been here every time. They're friends of mine now. Met a ton of people living here my whole life, my whole generations of family has moved here from Canada, from Tennessee, from Alabama. We came here and I was born here. I think they're our highest and best use people. I mean, do you want it vacant for half of the year? Or do you wanna wrestle with a potential bad investor? They're good people, they have the appropriate safety measures in place, and I work right down the road. I'll walk down there and keep an eye on it if you want me to. So anyways, again, my name is Trevor Knapp. My first time speaking here tonight. I really value what I've learned to see how this goes. I'm gonna apply some of this to the Young Professionals Board. So thank you all, and that's all I have to say. Put my number down for you.
Thank you, Trevor.
Thank you. Do you need all this filled out, address and everything as well, if you prefer?
I mean, if you have time.
I can do it. I just don't wanna hold anyone else up. Thank you again.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Stafford. I'm a local realtor as well at City Two Shore Real Estate. Trevor, as you heard, spoke a little bit about the real estate. I actually uh want to deter from my professionalism real quick and uh speak a little bit about what I spoke to at the public hearing in April on just the uh I guess a little bit on a personal level as well as what Sarah and Ethan could bring to the table as far as Cadillac. Opening up Cadillac is as well has been and is becoming more of a tourist town. We are opening doors to not only people in Traverse City, Grand Rapids, Big Rapids area, but I mean, if you look around, the vehicles have been coming in, we've been seeing people from Florida, Georgia, the South, they're coming up here. And this is a talked about town on, I don't know if anyone's familiar, but TikTok, social media, it's already being talked about. I don't wanna put Sarah under the bus here, but she has a influence, but a hundred and fifty thousand followers on Instagram alone. I do believe, I could be mistaken on the exact number, but it's high. So in other words, you have a hundred and fifty thousand people that could bear witness to this beautiful home in Pine Street Home and could bring business not only to them, but to our communities. We have uh bakeries downtown, we have the Pizza Plus downtown that could open up business and as well as Trevor said, really dive into that highest and best use. It could be a really good investment for the city, for the communities, and for the people. Another thing, once again, um I agree with Trevor on this, these aren't your big bad investors. These are people that originally were looking for homes in Traverse City in more attractive that came here on a whim, fell in love with an area and said, we want to build a business here. We wanna be a part of the community, we wanna invest. I think it's huge. I think it's uh what's needed in this town, especially a lot of uh younger youth coming together and starting businesses in this town, cause it sounds like everyone's in agreeance that we want this town to grow. So I I personally believe that Sarah and Ethan can definitely bring that for the town as well as for the community. And I uh I believe that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lee Ramsey and I've lived here for almost six years, right across the street from Sarah's property. And that's, I believe, their one twenty eight East Pine, we're one twenty one East Pine. And I remember the people who lived there before Sarah bought it, uh Bob and Troy, and we knew them very well. And when they bought the home, we were really excited about it being a possible potential uh short term rental and or Airbnb, I don't know the correct terminology. But um it's a lot better than having a property sit vacant because that's a magnet for all sorts of bad things. And I I grew up uh right across the bridge from Memphis, Tennessee, and you wanna talk about vacant property and what happens is not good. And we were really excited to meet Sarah and uh she came over, she actually sent letters out, but we went across to meet her. And we really feel great about what they're doing, what they wanna do to open up business opportunities um for for the businesses here in Cadillac. Well, we love living behind Pizza Plus and across the street from the Book Nook, I'm an avid bookworm, you know. But um the other businesses that are just around the corner that would love to have more customers, more people come into the town. My mom just recently came up and she visited and we told her about the house across the street and she looked at it, she said, yeah, that'd be the best thing for it if if they were to do that. My mom is an executive real estate broker in Arkansas and she wanted to come up here and see where we lived. She fell in love with our town. She's gonna come back to visit and she said if uh this is approved for Sarah, she'll bring my family. I have six grown brothers and sisters who are married and they have families and they like to come visit. And so I'm all for it, so I just thought I'd let y'all know that this is a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this one I can speak of on behalf of DDA. You guys, I'm sure, already got letters uh from the unanimous board supporting this project uh for many of the the reasons mentioned. But even more than that, I I wanna say two other things. One is, I'm sorry that you all have had to go through the insanity of this process. Um the it's been way more difficult than it should have been to get here. And I will say in regards to some of the criticism that I hear from, ah, I don't really know them very well. I've met them a couple times, you know, whatever. But I can't help but think if it's as frustrating for you all as it is for us residents and business owners and stuff like that, I can't help believe that there's some frustration on their end too and that some mistakes were made. And forgiveness is not always a bad thing. Um and the and I guess that leads into my third point is, this is a special use permit and the great thing about that is as easily as they can be handed out, they can be revoked. So if some of the conditions that seem to be concerns are not being met, i.e. they, you know, have not completely learned from their past mistakes and are not communicating properly or doing these things, make it a condition of of the permit. And then if if they don't hold up their bargain, their end of the bargain, like they're promising to do, and I don't think there's any reason to doubt, then the then it gets revoked and and it's done. So in my mind, I guess it's a pretty simple solution and and I would say it's rightfully so to include that in there. But I I do think it would be a mistake to bring the whole thing backwards or or to a grinding halt on a condition that can just be part of the special use process.
Any more input? Good or bad? Top and good, actually. Okay, seen seen none. What?
I have something to say.
Well, or.
My neighbor and good friend runs a bike shop right close.
Okay.
And he he's slammed with tourist business and one of the first things he hears, where is there a place to live? Where can I stay? And he gets it all the time.
Okay, good. At this time, I'm gonna close public hearing and we'll kick this around. Questions, staff?
Go.
Um I know in some of the neighboring uh townships where they've adopted some short term um uh ordinances, you know, Cherry Grove, I believe, some township. Um you know, they have to uh come in, somebody comes in, I don't know, correct me if it's the fire um fire marshal for the townships? Or the, somebody comes in and says, here's what your occupancy is. Um who does that here for the city? Who's determined sixteen is occupancy? Who's determined six cars is what's allowed? Do we have those guidelines?
The building inspector and fire marshal collectively. Depends on on what it is and uh whether or not the building code gets involved or not, or the fire marshal, the fire code gets involved, so those two.
But for short term rentals, there has been no adopted policy as to, like, if you take our long term rental policy, that is, does not apply for short term rentals. There's been no official policy adopted for how um those would be registered, similar to our long term, which is where um uh your last um special land use for short term rental, you put in those conditions for like the yearly update um and the contact information being on file and whatnot.
So as of now, there's no guideline for what the permitted number is for any given property?
For short term rentals?
For short term rental.
There's not.
One of the conditions, though, you could you could impose a condition on a special use permit that it complies with occupancy standards for, under the building code um or residential code otherwise, if, you know, if that was something that the planning commission was concerned about or wanted to ensure was complied with. As um Danielle mentioned too, you could also require that that be uh re-upped or otherwise approved every year. Um you know, to ensure continued. Um you know, to ensure continued compliance with that standard. If there are any, you know, changes to the building itself that would. Change the occupancy such that it would need to be reviewed by by our building departments.
Now guys, wh- what exactly then is the registered rental certificate? Does that not address these issues?
So that are our registered rental certificates um for are for properties that are being rented out for greater than ninety days. That's what our long-term rental. Um ordinance states. And those go through a series of inspections by our fire department. Um and are renewed every three years, so they have to abide by the property maintenance code um and meet all of those.
And why do they need one?
Because they were renting it, they registered it to rent it greater than ninety days.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Sarah, can I ask you a question? In the early um part of of doing this or or any part throughout? Or was it covered when you applied for the rental? Has um you know, Fire Marshal come through? You can sleep sixteen, are you confident you'd be permitted if Fire Marshal? Has any of that been done? Do you have any insight onto how that would land?
Yeah, when we applied for the long-term rental permit, we had to have the Fire Marshal come out and the building inspector. Um and do a walkthrough of the property to see if it's safe, see if it's appropriately situated for the amount of people that we were. Going to be advertising it to rent it long-term as well. Um and they saw that sixteen was suffice, so like in between us shutting down last September and now we could have it listed available for rent for. Longer than thirty or ninety days or whatever the requirement is, but as you can imagine, we didn't find any tenants. But the Fire Marshal and the inspector both, um they had a couple of things, like I think I had one B.B. smoke alarm that needed to be changed and a. Spider extinguisher that needed to be added and a fence that needed to be added in the backyard.
They've indicated that's the max.
Um and then we added all of those things.
So sixteen was was approved for that aspect, okay?
Yeah, the property could fit, I mean, we've we've seen people run Airbnb's where they would have fit twenty-five people in there. Um our goal is for people to be higher paying and comfortable. So we reel it back.
May I add something?
Sure.
Thank you. Um yeah, and just to kinda add to that, um the the stays that leave. That stay there, um the reviews, if you ever looked at the reviews on Airbnb and I I think that this is something I I really wanna emphasize. You can't be a successful short-term rental operator if you aren't getting great reviews and you can't get great reviews if you're not managing the heck out of it. You just can't. You you won't stay up, you it won't last. It's kind of its own self-check to make sure that we're running this thing super. Efficiently, professionally, and to make sure it's not imposing challenges on neighbors as neighbors have also mentioned, hey, this has been great, we'd much rather see it filled. And in those reviews, we get comments about, hey, we came out for a funeral and. It was such a special place to just connect and be with our families while we were trying to reconnect after the loss of a loved one. That's the kinda stays. That have been really impactful to us as owners. We get to provide that family connection for three generations to go, hey. Maybe we are getting getting together for a birthday, maybe we are getting together for a funeral, whatever it is. Cadillac doesn't have anything to provide that can pro- you know, support that that type of stay. This is a really big chances, I think everybody's been mentioning, to get in that right direction. It can be run effectively. We haven't had any kind of fiascos with cops ever on this property. I I really think that this is a truly special opportunity for Cadillac to a award a special use permit for this exact function.
Thank you Matthew.
Thank you.
Okay. What's everyone's thoughts? I feel they try to cover all their bases, make things correct. Do them the right way.
I think if we do approve it, we need to have all the conditions included in approval.
Yes, I mean unless you wanna eliminate something, but I think they're all valid.
Can I ask a little bit more about the performance guarantee? That's the first time I've heard of anything like that.
Agreed, uh Mr. Adams, is that something you can feel?
What was the question?
The performance guarantee, I.
It's a new one.
Yeah, and I can I can speak to that a little bit too, Jerry has any other comments. So the the zoning ordinance allows for the planning commission to require a performance bond. Um under certain circumstances when granting a special land use permit, and I'll read the particular section of the zoning ordinance. Um it and I'll I'll highlight the portion that I think is most important here is. Um in fixing the amount of such per- performance guarantee, the the board shall limit it to reasonable improvements required to meet the standards. Of this chapter, i.e. the standards we've outlined previously. And to protect the natural resources or the health, safety and welfare of the residents of the city. And future users or inhabitants of the proposed project or project area, including but not limited to roadways, utilities, sidewalks, screening and drainage. So that's obviously very broad, right? Um I'm not sure it might is necessarily applicable here unless um the planning commission wanted to impose certain conditions like screening. Um or other buffering. I know there's already existing fencing on the property. I'm not sure it's necessary in this instance. Um but it's certainly, I I just wanted to throw it out there as an option too, if that was something that the planning commission wanted to consider as a requirement. Or if they were hesitant about any um ensuring that any of the conditions are otherwise. Uh complied with or any of the um standards that the applicant has already demonstrated as part of the application. Any additional thoughts?
Yes, Mr. Adams.
Over the years in the past where we've most considered this, uh it's been related to site improvements, as she's mentioned. Uh fencing, landscaping.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks, things of that uh utilities and so forth.
And the reason we would require it for improvements is to ensure that they get done. Cuz we're we're con- it's we're conditioning the approval on they put up this fencing or this. Construct these sidewalks and the reason we would require a performance guarantee is to ensure that it gets done and if they don't, then. The city has those funds um as part of either an escrow account or some other um surety bond or what have you. Uh in order to ensure that those improvements get completed in the manner in which the planning commission is requiring them to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Adams.
I don't know if you have it in front of you, but in your packet, um in terms of considering a recommendation, you may wanna refer to. To the page in which she uh has indicated the recommendations.
Yes.
And there's a series of uh of conditions that you uh perhaps with the exception of number six. I'm sorry, with the exception of number five.
Thank you for noting that.
It would be a something to guide, to help guide you in making a recommendation.
And which conditions you might wanna consider imposing if if you so choose.
Joe's wheels are turning.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I um. I appreciate the applicants coming tonight. I appreciate what you have said. I feel that years ago, I was lied to. I believe that an individual who I I think is Mr., who is your owner. Came and asked for a rezoning. Didn't end up getting it and then rented it. I. Trust is hard-earned but easily lost. And I'm not against this use at this place. Especially if done in the way that you have described it would be done. I really, really. I'm not gonna make the motion, I'm not saying I'm gonna vote against it, but I'm I'm still upset. And I I don't need to dredge up old things, staff who aren't here anymore, but this wasn't just one-sided. This was a commission that I don't think was told the whole story. And so that's fair as a response, but. That's all I have to say.
Well, I personally think we've beaten this horse long enough. And I am perfectly willing to make a motion that we accept this. With the recommendations, accepting number five. I I personally agree with the annual review. I think that's a good thing and and I believe annually should be enough. It appears that we have a method of doing this in place. And I'm satisfied with it. So.
Good.
I make a motion.
Gene Van Pelt? Second? Danielle?
So just to reread the motion, just to to clarify and make sure we get it on the record. So the motion is to approve the special land use permit application as presented. With the following conditions, and I'll read them off to make sure I get them correct. The applicant must enforce the submitted guest rental agreement, including noise, occupancy and parking rules. The plenty um the applicant must be subject to a periodic annual evaluation of the special land use permit. By city staff. Guest parking must be limited to designated onsite spaces, which is six, and the parking in the public lot with no encroachment on neighboring properties. And the applicant must provide updated contact information to the city and neighbors for addressing concerns. If the property is sold, contact information must be updated and provided to the city and neighbors. Is is that consistent with the motion, I assume?
Yes. Thank you.
I got a quick question for the vote. That public parking lot, is that all public parking lot up behind Pizza Plus, Peterson's? So they don't need any special permits or anything in that one? Like other city lots?
Yeah, so overnight parking um during the winter, um so November through April would um require um overnight parking pass.
And you're aware of that? Does this remove number five then?
Yes.
From from the special use?
Yes.
And just to clarify, Van Pelt, did you support that motion?
Yes, I did.
Bosher? Bosher?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Bent? Potben?
Yes.
Van Pelt?
Yes.
Post?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Shippers? Bauman?
Yes.
Thank you Danielle.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um just for expediency and so forth, I I'd suggest maybe you, if you would be so kind, uh maybe move number seven. Up uh prior to new business. I know the folks have been here a while and and uh.
Oh, sure.
And it's totally up to you, obviously, but.
Not a problem.
Or actually, Mr. Chair, there isn't any new business, old business or board member comment, rather?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Perfect.
This has been a great education.
I'm on I'm on number seven, communications. Okay, that's where we're at. Uh Lakeland Apartments.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Are in our audience. Good evening.
How about how about if we let Danielle give you a brief introduction?
You guys can pass him up. Um so this is Kyle and Aaron. Um they are. Developers, construction, uh they are going to give you a a brief introduction and overview. Um of a development that they wish to bring to the city of Cadillac. Um they have been working with staff. Um for a number of months behind the scenes trying to to get this hammered out and they would like to um. Introduce themselves to you guys prior to an application being presented, so I'll turn it over to Kyle.
May I say one one more thing? Yeah, the goal, as I understand it, is the gentleman will hopefully be submitting a sketch plan, sketch site plan. Next month for your review and then that will be followed obviously by a final site plan and. So we thought it just might be a good idea to give you a, you know, a little bit of indication of what's coming up. Uh instead of just waiting until you see a sketch plan, so.
Yeah, thank you. Um yeah, my name's Kyle Fryer. This is Aaron Kucci. We run a construction and development company together, um out of Jensen, Michigan here, so. Um yeah, first of all, I just wanna thank you for your time tonight. Um we're. Super excited to show you a project we've been working on for, like Danielle said, a number of months. Um a lot of different variations and worked with John Wallace and now we're working with these guys and um it's been a very pleasant experience um. But uh yeah, like Jerry said, we plan to formally submit um July. At the uh July Planning Commission meeting, but thought a sneak peek would be beneficial and um. Yeah, showing you the project and and meeting all of you, so appreciate that. Um the project encompasses. Seven parcels north of Pollister Street, um off the east end of Mossar. Uh the total area is eleven, um just over eleven acres. And our main access will be off Cobb Street, kind of across from the hospital. A little bit further to uh the west, I guess it would be. The project right now is proposed RPOD with uh seven parcels being rezoned. Um the overall plan uh is to have two hundred and fifty-two. Apartments within seven buildings. Property's unique location puts us less than a half mile from downtown while um also being near the edge of the city limits. And therefore, um a bit less developed. Uh this gives the city the opportunity to give a significant amount of housing close to downtown. With minimal impact on existing neighborhoods. Uh as such, we feel the proposed density is appropriate for this site. Plan also caused for three storage garage buildings um along Cobb Street. Uh the development is broken into three phases with an expected year between each phase. Um the layout of the site is designed to minimize the impact of development and to the existing residential neighborhood to the west. Um only two of the buildings are placed near the property line. They are purposely orientated so the narrow side of the building faces the property line. Um and actually. Do we have the? So that's kinda what what we're looking at there. We're connecting um. Excuse me. While we are connecting to the streets for those developments. Uh for additional and emergency access, our only entry signage will be on Cobb Street. Um we're also placing central dumpsters near Cobb Street to encourage encourage residents to use that entrance. We're also proposing landscape screening screening along the entire shared border with existing neighborhood. Uh the northern boundary of the property is the railroad. The railroad uh serves as a buffer. To the residential development on the north side of the tracks. Um there's also a significant elevation change along the edge of the tracks. A hill adjacent to the tracks. That's upward of fourteen foot tall, screens the buildings in phase three. Um the tracks are upward of twenty foot above the proposed access drive elevation. Which will also help provide screening for those improvements. So in the site, there you can see there's. There are a lot of twists and turns um. And we kinda thought that would help, our engineer thought that would help kinda slow traffic down um as a bit of a safety measure. Uh you could see also there's a primary open space within the development. There is a park area set up with. In the middle of the buildings that is approximately one acre in size. This will be for residents and can be used for a large variety of outdoor activities. Um it's. Section of the park could be fenced off also for a um. A leech-free dog park. Um so right now, we're currently working with Mac. Um, so right now, we're currently working with Mac McCollin on a, um, finalizing our brownfield plan. That will be considered by the Brownfield Authority on June thirty. This, that will be a key component to help us propel the project, and we are also working on the MI Neighborhood Grant. Uh, we chose Cadillac for a variety of reasons. Um, you know, a big one was its lack of, of overall workforce housing. We did, we looked at the, um, Northern Housing Study that was, was done a couple of years ago and that put Wexford County over thirty-seven hundred units, housing units short, um, by two thousand twenty-seven. And, um, with over thirteen hundred of those units being multifamily or apartments needed. Cadillac, obviously, is, as you guys know, is a four-season destination, lakes, trails, skiing, and all things northern Michigan. That's, was a huge draw for us. Proximity to US one thirty-one is, was important also. Local leadership has been amazing to work with and, and receptive to, uh, quality workforce housing project. And strong local employers and industry. As we went to, uh, Aaron and I both went to your developer days, the last go-around and kind of got a tour of Cadillac and got to meet, um, a couple of different business owners and, um, yeah, really liked it. And found, uh, found this piece of property and kind of, like I said, it's been a few months we, we've been working on it, but, um, yeah, we're excited about it, kind of working through the kinks and, uh, yeah, that's, that's about it. Thanks again for your time tonight, we're grateful for that and any questions, comments?
We do have a, we do have a video too, by the way, on.
Oh, do you?
That as well.
Guys, can I ask, what is the acreage of the property here that you're working with? Eleven, wasn't it?
Eleven point.
Eleven, okay.
Yeah, eleven point two, two-five. Yeah, eleven point two-four.
Okay. You probably said that and I missed it.
Nope, that's all right.
I do apologize, I don't know what the volume's gonna be, so I don't want to scare anyone.
Ah, didn't even have time to get the popcorn out.
Oh, nice video, guys.
Thank you.
Awesome, where are you guys at?
Our office is Genesee.
Genesee.
Yep. Yep, yep, I live in Hudsonville and he's in West Olive area, Lakeshore area, so, yeah.
Well, we thank you for having an interest in the area and you are correct, there, housing shortage.
Yep.
So we look forward to seeing you next month.
All right, thank you.
You're gonna be here.
We'll be here.
Well, John will be at least.
Okay. Any public comments since, uh, I, we blew through new business, old business, and board member comments didn't matter, so. Any public comments this evening from anybody about anything, good or bad? Enjoy the heat, I don't know, whatever. There being no public comment, no other business?
Return.
Are you ready, sir? We're all, thank you all for coming.